Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
And what I'm going to do first is go through their agenda and acknowledge who's here and whether I need to incorporate them into the agenda. And then I need to try to make sure that I operate in an effective manner to make sure that the board operates on target. So before I go through the video, I want to cover what's on the agenda for tonight. And we do have a full board tonight in terms of Leon, Susan, Jackie, Tori, Dave Frederson, Kenny, Stephanie, Sheila, and Wendy Marie. Tori is going to stay with the Mount Anthony school board. Okay. The agenda for tonight is by Zoom and we strongly recommend that you attend in person. It makes it easy to happen. We have public comments as the agenda item. We have finance, trade this report. We have a consent agenda with minutes and warrants, retirements, nominations, no resignation, well, we have some presentations too as well, no leave of absence. We have several policies to talk about in terms of from the policy committee too. We have superintendent's report, we have administrative reports from Tim and Chris. And then we have committee reports from ad committee and the athletic education, education committee for the Steel Hawk team. Steel Hawk, I mean, it's for nearly ad hoc a team to discuss tonight. And then we have the famous thing, the chair's report. And then we have included budget status, student enrollment, and coaches positions to be included in here. I think I got them all. So at this particular time, I know we have anyone in here from the public that would like to have addressed the public in on the public comments. One, two, okay. Just wanted to make sure when public comments are taken, the person will need to state their name. And if you, the town that you're from, so that we'll know that you are from this particular district. And then if you would like to leave a telephone number or address, you can do that. So that if you ask a question or something, I have a comment, we'll be able to get back to you on it at some point and sometime along that line. So at this particular time there, I'll ask for board members with no comments at all. Okay. The first thing before I go to go to public comments, one of the things that we have for responsibility as a board is that we want to ensure that each student achieve his or her full academic potential and based on academic skills in the areas of reading, writing, and computation each year. Goal two, we have the community understand and appreciate and become involved in our schools. And third, to ensure that Mount Anthony board operates in an effective manner. Those are the goals that we have. And so this last third one is me and I'm going to try to make sure we operate in an effective manner. So with that, at this time, I have two hands for public comment. If you, you want, you could sit and tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Morgan Martin and I'm here on behalf of my own children that are in high school, but also kind of raise a voice for a lot of parents at this time in high school. There's just over the last several years, my daughter's a junior, I've got one sophomore and four more coming up along the way. I've just kind of watched the decline of responsibility and support go down gradually from administration, from staff, from counseling, from things being taken seriously. So if you go in and you say, hey, I'm having this problem, nine times out of 10, you don't get a call back. You don't get an email back. I've been, my daughter's been out of school now for 10 days. Took over a week to get any work home for her despite repeated attempts to have anything addressed. Weeks to get phone call, have anything. And then when you do, finally happens, it gets, you get attacked. It really is, you're like an attack or the meeting gets shut down. You're not, we're not having this conversation. We're not addressing this. We're not going to speak to you. It's not productive to talk to you, I've been told many times. It's not productive for me to speak to you from the principals, from superintendents. And I'm super concerned about this because I want my kids to go to school. I want them, they came from Sacred Heart, they're in public school. I want them to have an education. And when I've tried to look for other ways to go about it because my daughter doesn't feel comfortable or safe there because of the bullying that's happening. It's been being addressed for months and months and nothing happens. I'm told there's no other option. We're, we're giving her all these absences and that's going to kind of be the way it is. Finally, after all this time, I think I have a meeting on Friday. But it's taken so long and me pulling my kid out of school. And I probably, I don't know, they could probably tell you 20, 30 emails, phone calls, just, just even get a response. And months, I was October, beginning of October, I was promised support for my daughter. She came forward about some sexual misconduct. Since then, it's gone downhill for her. I think nobody wanted to hear what she had to say. And she unfortunately stood up for herself in that manner. Got kind of pushed to a breaking point when she broke. She, she was thrown under the bus for it, not saying what she did was perfect. But when I spoke to them and said, hey, you know, what happened to the counselors and the clinicians that you were going to offer these girls that you promised? I was told, oh, sorry, I dropped the ball. So now my kid's at home and my other daughter's uncomfortable in school and nothing happens. And I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but I've asked to have it looked at. I've asked the superintendent to look at it. I've asked to file paperwork. He said, there is no such paperwork. He will take it upon himself to look at it, a easy spin and let me know. But there's nothing, nothing in writing that I can do and nothing that I can say. And it's terrible and I have to send my daughter back to a place where she's uncomfortable. And you know, the kids are awful to her and all the fun is on. Everything she went for is on. And I'm not saying she's perfect. You have to make your own mistakes. But it's been months trying to get somebody to listen, somebody. I reached out to the Vermont State Board of Education. I get nothing back. I think it's becoming a serious situation and I've had a lot of parents reach out to me. And the parents that I speak to, I'm also in the school system. So we hit the same door, we hit the same door, but they're all scared. Everybody's scared because you're met with kind of a threat basically. Like, we're not going to either have this or it's going to be an attorney or your kid's going to get kicked out or there's going to be a ramification if you stand up for yourself and you stand up for your kids. Or all of a sudden, your kid has no friends or teachers attack you. I've had the teachers saying, no, it's not, it's very own fault. Like, it's not a good environment there. And I know things have been crazy over the last few years. But I think too much is going to sweat under the rug. And I would really great if people could look at this and help, help a lot of these kids that are struggling, that are struggling and losing education and need support. They don't need to be blamed and hurt. They need support. And so I just wanted to come and ask you guys for that help. And if there's anything that I need to do or direction you can send me in to help. I tried to join Mampa to try to help with the drama department. That's where my situation stems from. And that was a useless thought. So that, I just wanted to put that out there and anything you guys can do to help me and the children in the school would be great.
Thank you. You have another?
I'm Charles Martin. I'm kind of like here to echo what Morgan has said. But in advance, I'm the grandpa and after school almost every day up until recently, till this really hit, it had, there was a group of kids that would come over to the house, all different ones, drama department, athletics, they'd come over and eat. And I, you could slowly watch from the beginning of the year to now. The kids lost interest in school. I'm getting, I see films taken at lunchtime of kids having sex in the cafeteria. Little boys telling me about strip searches where they have to lift their shirts out and open their pockets after days and days and days of nobody finding anything and no threats. Old girls that, this is where I'm putting myself. I don't want to go to school anymore. And they'll come and they'll discuss this because it's a safe space, but it's, it's school wide. This is a different year. It may have, Mount Anthony's been great. It can be great. My family's been here forever. We watched the school be built. We know the principals right down the line and it was good. It's changed and there is a real adversarial stance. I've been to meetings, principals too. There's an adversarial speech. I can't discuss this. I won't discuss it. I don't like what you're saying and nothing. I, you know, one of the meetings, I was told that they dropped the ball. This is something, have you addressed what we've been talking about? No, I guess I dropped the ball, but the ball never gets picked up. It just goes on and on and kids are being pulled out of that school. They're staying home. They're leaving school at the end of the day. I see them out, I see the neighbors coming home. Talking, it's a good neighborhood. I talked to all the kids. I know all the kids from you. When you were little kid, right? And something needs to be studied and addressed. as a taxpayer, as a community member, as an old Antontine, it's something's really wrong. And when you go to address it, you're told it can't be done. There is no paperwork. We're at the top. You can't talk to anybody else or you don't go to this. But can't you? You get nothing back. If somebody wants to file a complaint, there's no forms. You can't complain about a teacher. You can't complain about a principal. It's first, I hate to see the kids get lost in this and the families get lost. This is our little school. Can't happen here. It's awful. We're the bulk of ones, but this is not just us. This is townwide.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for coming to share with us. And I, and so we'll take those, this information on the device.
I can cry honestly, I can really cry.
Well, thank you. And you're welcome to stay and attend the rest of the meeting if you'd like. We don't, we don't want to leave, but I appreciate it. Okay. Are there any other public comments? So did we get both names down good? For a minute, just to make sure we got them down.
I'll collect one more, just a quick one. If a person does want to make a complaint against a faculty member or, or an administrator, is it to you or to nebulous something? What, what, what's the process?
The, the process will help somebody get back to you in terms of that. But the, the board members, all the board members are free to hear information. And I'll answer that here. We have specific documentation and say, and if that care you, if you want to do something, how to do it. Okay. We have all that written down. So somewhere it needs to be known that if you have a complaint, you have a method by which you can complain and document. And anytime you document something, you can send it to the school board. I'll scan it. The, the directions, I'll answer. It should start at the lowest level. It should start with the teacher and then the principal. And then, and then it should go to the administration for the food after the principal, the superintendent. And so you come in here now. And so there are some questions to be answered and some questions. They're here and they'll be able to answer those questions. Since I, I do know that we cannot discuss other information about other things and other circumstances along that line. So if you're inquiring about somebody else, you can't get that. You're only going to get that associated with your kids' class. And if you're the parent, you're going to get it. But if you're the grandparent, you're not going to get it.
I don't, I don't want it out. I don't mean any specifics.
Just wanted to make sure that, that there is a path by which we can communicate. So I went on to answer that. I didn't want you to leave here and think you didn't get that. So we'll give back to you what I mentioned earlier. We won't go back and forth with a comment along that line. And I wanted to make sure you got a name, a telephone number, and an address. And you'll get all the things that you passed here addressed.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. The, the next item, if there's no more public comments, is finance. And on the finance, we have a, a trade this report for September and November. And I think we need to entertain a motion to accept the change.
I'm moving.
It's been moved by Fran, seconded by Sheila. Are there any comments concerning that? Seeing none, there's no one on board, all in favor, it's by eyes. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you very much. That's all I see on the disvergence report. And we have the consent agenda. We have minutes from our last meeting together in here. Minutes are from September the 21st. Hope everybody read them and made sure that they kept it, what was said and done at this meeting. The minutes are also posted on the website for the, for the public to see them to know that this is what transpired and what we did at this meeting. So can I have a motion to accept? I mean, the consent agenda is there. We'll do it all unless and somebody wants to pull it off. We have one on there for a total of $4,32,006, $56.76 on here. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to look at that and understand these numbers out here. Leave of absence, we have none. We have some resignations. Wanted to make sure that you understand those individuals that have left us, who they were. And then we have nominations and the nominations form for individuals that we have to take their place. And so with that, I'll ask, is there any concern with the agenda items that are attached to this sheet by Jim, having had the opportunity to read it all and see it all? Would you, Fran?
Yeah, the vendor warrants. I just checked, it's on page three, the general fund rather, I used to say. And in the energy products, we've got 59,675. Maybe Tony will know about that. Is that, how long has been this at for the fuel oil?
That is from, we get fill at the end of the year. And then the fuel oil, remember heats our water all spring warm weather, summer and fall. So we filled up again back at the end of August, beginning of September just to top everything off to get ready for winter.
And what is the, what is the fee we're paying for that, you know?
It's $5 and it went up again.
It was pretty good. I just wanted to get an idea. Why the wood boilers are flowing? And how about the wood pellets?
They went up a little bit, but not much.
Not much.
Now, Gagnon really took care of us again.
I, I just.
I budget, I typically budget about $130,000 a year for both schools combined for chips.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you got the question answered there. Fran, you all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So fuel oil question is all taken care of. Thank you very much. With that, have a motion to accept the second. It's been moved by Fran and seconded by Sheila. All in favor? Is there other comments? All in favor? Just eyes, give it right in the hand. Okay. Any abstaining? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for the consent agenda. Very good. The next thing we have on here is policies. Now, I, we have two policies on the committee, on here for discussion. And I, I'm thinking Fran, you, you as the representative for that.
Which I never made the meeting, but I'll, I'll read them.
Wendy was, were you, you were there?
No. She, she had nothing.
Well, anyway, if you want to, we could.
Policy meeting, but I wasn't.
No, no, I know, I know. I'll, I'll read here Fran, if you want to do, and I'll not, I'll discuss it after. Policy number 5050, discipline of students, suspension and expulsion of students is up for warning. It was in your, in your app policy, it was in your packet. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read that. We have few. I'll have Fran go ahead and say what you want to say about the policy.
Well, it's, I didn't see any really changes on the policy itself. I mean, this is for warning. So if anybody has any questions, that's going to come up again next month for adoption. And it's basically policy 5050, suspension, expulsion of students. And it's just for warning. So, so have another chance.
You'll have another chance. This is a warning, but we did make some graphical changes. And then what was really taking steps is we had our legal, school board legal attorney look at these policies and have to give us the right type of information to make sure that when we put something in and insert something in it, that we're legally set in the right direction. So with that, policy 5050, no other comments, all in favor of this? You can, I mean, we have a vote, except you move for warning. For warning, 5050. Who's wanting it?
I'll, I'll.
And Susan is seconding it again, or forgot about the jacket. Because of us having been less than 11 people, we don't have to have a second, but it's good to get it anyway, raw rules. Okay. All in favor? You want to oppose? You want to abstain? Oh, thank you. The next policy, Fran, on there is 5085, search and seizure.
Yeah, I'll pull that.
It's been moved, the seconded, anyone Fran, go beyond Jackie. This policy, the information that was changed in this was both policies are highlighted in yellow. So there were some grammatical changes and changes in this policy that affected the administration of this policy and was supposed to be administering and paying some attention to what is happening in a certain area. So those changes were made in this policy. I urge you to make sure you see all of those things out there. So with that, if no other comments, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none, anyone abstaining? So thank you. It passed unanimous, both policies. It passed on. And then if one, if there's always, you can always make some comments or something later if you solve something. The next item on the list tonight is the superintendent's report. It's doing.
Good evening, board members. We have a report done tonight on year two of our SBSU recovery plan for social, emotional health and wellbeing of our students. And I've invited assistant superintendent Laura Boudreaux, director of students, support services, Dr. Kate Abbott, and director of curriculum instruction and assessment, Melissa Senical, to give this presentation to you this evening. And it's, I'll follow up with, one reason we're talking about it now is as we enter the budget season, some of these issues that we discuss is budget critical. Thanks.
How much time are you going to take of this meeting? That's what I would like to know. I just wanted to make sure I got an idea or feel for it. That's all. You should be proposed. Okay. So they'll think about 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. It's part of recovery, which is required by the state of Vermont. As a reminder, our district had a team that was, that came together to create a recovery plan to chart our course after, and we're still, I'd still say in it to a small degree as part of the pandemic. And annually, we're updating you on three pillars. In September, we did academic achievement, which was pretty. So we're circling back around to social, emotional health, wellbeing. And so this is pillar one. And as a reminder, you can see our list of acronyms have grown. So we want you to just highlight the list. They're right there in front of you. So hopefully you'll, you can use that and we'll be very careful as we use them. You can always find information about the SBSU recovery process on the SBSU website. There's a button right on the homepage. We're always collecting feedback and we check it regularly. Tonight, we're again focused on the five transferable skills. We hope that our students have clear, effective communication, creative and practical problem solving, informed and integrative thinking, responsible and involve citizenship and self-direction. And we're going to do the whole presentation and then we'll take questions from board members. So the next, page two and page three have data. And I want to take a moment to just remind people about the guidance from the agency of education in reference to using any longitudinal comparisons and that the environment was different and that we should avoid interpretations for identifying trends at this time. The data, the data that you see in front of you in page two is from the school, a student risk screening scale for internalizing and externalizing behaviors. We have been doing this for several years from the guidance from the University of Kansas. The first data slide that you see is for internalizing. And some examples of the behaviors that you would see from students are shy or withdrawn, anxious or lonely. And right now, these are from Mount Anthony Millan High School. Internalizing high risk at 18%. Moderate risk for nine and low risk for 73% for internalizing behaviors. Externalizing, some examples of behaviors that the screener looks for are negative attitude, cheating, or behavior problems are some examples. And for externalizing that they saw from the fall benchmarking, 10% for high risk, 16% for moderate, and 74% are low risk for on that scale. Laura?
Last year, I reported out to you how many intakes I had completed as homelessness liaison between August and December. This year, I'm giving you at this point in time, as of November 10th, at the elementary, pre-K elementary level for the entire SBSU, I've done 29 homeless intakes. And at the secondary level, I've already done 24. So what do we do with this data? So it won't take too long on page four because it is the same for the instructional strategies and, and resources that we use as we did, as we had last year. But I will, wanted to point out that we included the K through 12 because we wanted you to see, see the tie-in and the scope of sequence of the, of the instructional resources that we use leading into the middle school and high school. We thought it was important. And the commonalities we have for both the middle and high school, we still have our PDIS, positive behavior intervention. Um, and the commonalities we have for both the middle and high school, we still have our PDIS, positive behavior interventions that supports. At the middle school, we have second step, which is grant funded, and zones of regulation, which is also grant funded. And for both the high school and the middle school, we have a restorative practices for instruction. Along with, I want to take one moment to say we have the health curriculum and the physical education curriculum in addition to transferable skills, and those are for all students. And then it's really important that we make sure that our teachers receive professional learning. And so again, um, we, we cycle around, we have many professionals that need to be trained, and so we do this on a rotating basis. So we've listed again, um, uh, the experiences, um, focused on trauma, restorative practices, non-violent crisis intervention, zones of regulation, and trauma drumming, which is a favorite. Um, we've recycled it around twice. Um, we just received a new grant to support trauma drumming. Um, again, but I want to highlight the three new professional offerings this year that we're using. And I also want to point out the grant funding. So please notice next to these items, we've listed what most of our professional learning is supported through grant funding, currently ESSR. Um, this year, our, uh, trauma consultant is providing, um, consults to our leadership teams to support, uh, conversations around children. Uh, we're offering circling office hours, which is an extension of the restorative circling training that teachers experienced last year. And we're also offering this year an introduction to restorative conversations. We want to focus tonight, um, a little, take a little bit of a deeper dive into something new we haven't shared with you before around our tier three interventions related to social emotional behavior. As a reminder, tier one is available to all of our students. Everyone receives it. And then sometimes when we collect data, we see that students need a little bit more, some interventions. And sometimes we have, uh, a small number of students that might need, um, a little bit more. And so just to highlight, um, a few of our district level, uh, tier three interventions. We do provide mental health services to support anxiety, uh, and depression. And that comes from a school counselor, a clinician, a school nurse. We do partner with United Counselors with us, who offers family emergency services and, and PUC, which can provide some clinical supports for us. We do lean on crisis prevention interventions. Um, and we have trainers in all of our buildings and then a district level trainer that can consult with leadership teams. And then we also, uh, have an in-house, uh, crisis council, a principal can reach out and say, hey, we need some, we really need someone from the outside to come and look at this problem in a comprehensive lens. And they ask us to assign people, so that's our crisis consulting. So we're just going to highlight just a few more.
So our on-point intervention is mirrored at the middle and high school by Champlain and Patriot Program. These interventions are behavioral and therapeutic environments for children to attend during the school day. And, uh, they're staffed by board certified behavioral analysts, clinicians, counselors, and small class sizes. Children's progress are monitored with their individual behavior plans, and once they've been safe for two months, then they can return back more so into a less restrictive environment for more of their day. These CBA's are board certified behavioral analysts are, um, a new addition in the last two years to our district. We have four board certified behavioral analysts that help us get really high quality, um, expertise around challenging behavior and helping us keep our schools, um, functioning in the way we'd like with behavior, with positive behavior. The BCBAs can also do functional behavioral assessments, which are individualized assessments for children to help them, um, to figure out what's getting in the way of their learning, uh, in terms of their behavior in the classroom and help create behavioral intervention plans for, to teach children to do it better. And more safely. So all of those interventions are allowed for, or provided for children with EST plans, five oh four plans, or IEPs. The next tier, which is tier four, are only available for children that have IEPs or an identified disability. So our tier four interventions include, uh, the ideals program and the NAC program. Those two programs are substantially separate environments where children, um, only can access it if they have an IEP designed specifically for complex disabilities and for children, the needs of learners who have autism. So both are monitored through their IDP goals and objectives. And regardless of whether or not you spend part of your day attending a specialized program, um, we like all children to be able to access that tier one instruction in the general environment as appropriate to them. So just because you attend part of the day doesn't mean you also don't attend hurt music or even class with your peers.
And finally, uh, last year, we shared with you the social emotional behavior staffing that was available in all the buildings, and again, we wanted to highlight, um, uh, for this school year, um, staffing patterns are, um, uh, basically the same. You can see they range from clinicians and counselors to nurses. Um, again, the family engagement specialists, um, spend a lot of time helping us support, um, building the bridge between home and school. Um, they were helping me today, um, tackle some, um, homeless problems. We were working on them together. It's great, so we can bring them together, um, and then they can work in the schools. Again, we'll see art therapy in there, which is a new and grant-funded opportunity. And other roles such as behavior interventionist. Um, the additional district level supports that we offer is again, we have a district level behavior, social emotional coach that can help support tier one instruction. We have a health and wellness coach that, uh, supports staff and students. Um, they've been hiking this year, there's yoga, there's mindfulness available to staff and then working on smarts, nutrition's important, so working on smart stats. We have some, um, health teachers that are partnering with, uh, health and wellness coach to really, um, infuse that learning. So at this time, we just again wanted to provide you with an update and give you an overview of pillar one of recovery, which is social emotional health and wellbeing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that their, their last page, it hits the bar. They just head on there, uh, for the middle school, the all, a summary of the school board base clinicians, the school board counselors, provision coordinators and.
Yes.
Two nurses, family engagement, uh, psych, uh, two psychologists, author, I think you mentioned in the news. And then board certified analysts and two behavior interventions out there for that. And then that the high school, I forgot to mention that was Chris, Tony Lee and Jen Austin. And at the high school, uh, Payne, uh, Nancy Vanderbilt and Jeremy Neal. The five board certified clinicians, six school counselors, two nurses, and two family engagement specialists, two psychologists, board certified behavior analysts, student adjustment counselors, and behavior intervention that goes along with the additional support. At this level, we are trying to make sure that we do the right thing to get it in the right places. So this is a good start, a good go from administrator down, so we're going to watch the flow go. And questions or anything that may need to be generated from here for the education committee, kind of, along that line. So as always, I'd like to end, end of the conversation with, is there anything that is required from this board that you're not getting, that you would like for us to think about? But a few job there, so that's me, Jim.
So you gave me my opening, uh, Liam.
Okay.
So we're at the part, uh, the budget process, what I want to talk to you about, that the requests for personnel, staffing changes are in from principals. Uh, I'll be, uh, meeting with director finance operations for an A board and to see what those requests are. Uh, I'm going to suspect that there will be requests for additional personnel in these areas. Even though we have, uh, supports in place, but what some of the challenges we're seeing in our schools, it's, it, there's not enough, uh, support. So. And speaking of budget, um, just some reminders, the town meeting is late this year. It's not until March seventh, uh, so it'll be the first Tuesday match. Uh, town meetings, uh, as you know, we got to do thirty, uh, at least thirty days, I know more than forty days before to warn that town meeting. So we will need to warn it somewhere in the window of January twenty-fourth through February fifth. Uh, budget meetings with the boards and committees will begin in December. Next week is a short week with Thanksgiving. The week following Thanksgiving, the auditors are here that entire week, so, uh, finance department will be a little busy. So anticipate that we will be asking to schedule budget meetings during the first week of December. Other important dates for, uh, for us as we estimate the tax rate and I, and I thank Director Gordon for feeding in this information. Uh, by December first, we hope to have the equalized pupil counts. Uh, but that has been delayed the past two years, so don't anticipate that we'll have that, uh, uh, in December first, but, and these are all things that will be important as we go through the budget process. And if it's all late on December first, I'm not going to be, uh, that concerned about it because it's, we have at least a week more in the budget process this year than we did last year. Last year was the earliest. The town meeting could be, this year is the latest. Uh, and then the projected homestead yield from the bond tax commissioner also, we anticipate that on or before or slightly after December first. And by mid to late December, we should have a common level of appraisal for each of the towns released from the Vermont Department of Taxation. So we are deep into budget season here at central office, and we'll be bringing it, uh, to the boards, uh, starting the first week of December. We need to wrap up our work by the twenty-fourth of January. So, uh, no meeting scheduled yet, but you'll be hearing from us and, um, from my, our meetings with the principals, and there are needs that are going to be, that we will be proposing to during that process. Other than I have a warrant to pass around?
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone else have any questions? But, or Jim, be brief with, please, Jackie.
Yes, could you give us a list of the people and, uh, that were hired for the ESSR funds, through the ESSR funds?
Yeah, we can break that up.
Thank you.
But that'll be important as we get into budget season because, you know, I mean, there is a concern, Jackie, that we get into, um, you know, one year left of, after this year of funding for ESSR funds and some of these critical positions. You know, some of that will be proposing, some go into the budget.
Is there a way to measure the effectiveness?
We are going to, we will have data for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, had some, uh, some word that was just about, I mean, he won't answer, they have to do it itself, but ESSR funds list and with the other comments on that for the minutes. Brian?
Yeah, this, this question isn't for Jim, it's basically for Laura Boudreaux. What are we doing? Where are these homeless people in Spain? Under the bridge or?
Uh, I just, I don't think we can, uh, answer that question like that out in public.
Are they being taken care of? You can ask that question.
Yeah, they are.
You can answer that question. They are, and we, and Laura. You can give them a general, what the classifications of homeless.
Yeah, so either, so under McKinney Vinta, the first question of the intake that I do with families or a high school, that's, uh, an older student that asks, um, I say, do you have an, um, uh, adequate, regular nighttime residence? Or are you, um, involved in shared housing, which is, uh, maybe doubling up with a family member or a friend? Are you in a shelter, a hotel, a campground or other? And that's the conversation that I get.
Okay, so they're being housed. It's not like they're out on the street or.
And we also have a, well, we, and we are, we're in Bennington, we do, we have the homeless coalition, so there is a shelter and. So that's the first question that we ask, and then we try to connect them with community resources to support.
Thank you. I was just concerned that they're, you know, they're being taken care of, so.
Yeah, we've been gathering information on the students. We can't personally identify anybody as a group. And so you can see that we're trying to keep the information out here so that the appropriate people can address those that need it and the appropriate areas. Thank you. Any other questions? Not? Thank you, I say done. Uh, the next, uh, is an administrative report from the high school principals. Who wants to go first here? Mr. Payne is on the list first.
So, um, I will try to keep my report short for the expectation of the chair. Just want to say, uh, thank you to the Mount Anthony community. Had the privilege of traveling to Rutland this past Saturday and watching, uh, really an amazing football game. Um, you know, it worked out for us. The football team is now state champions for the first time since nineteen ninety-four. Um, actually moved to Bennington the night that they won. Thought the high school was on fire, it was all fire department, came into town, but, um, um, it was everything that athletics and student athletes are supposed to be. It was a nice day in Rutland, the crowd was very positive, it was an opponent that we've seen before. The sportsmanship on the field, the entire gang, kids helping each other up, patting each other on the back, being positive. Very few fouls. Um, yes, it was a dramatic finish, a double overtime, and it probably shaved a few years off my lifespan, but it, um, it was everything you're supposed to be positive of. And then a short ride home to Bennington and seeing the fire department and the police department out. And going downtown and seeing people stepping out of shops and out on the street cheering for kids. That's a very proud moment for this town, and I just want to thank Chad Gordon, who's, uh, deserves all of this praise, his staff, the athletes, the moms and dads, the families who cart these kids to practice and go off to games and cheer for them. I think the student section voted, uh, most, the loudest and most cheerful, uh, section out of Plattsburgh now, we appreciate that plug. It was just very positive, I was a very proud participant in that, and I apologize if my voice is still recovering and left it in Rutland. Um, other positive things, this week, uh, marks the start of the high school drama production. Yeah, the students will be putting on the high school version of Chicago. Performances start tomorrow, there's Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, there's a matinee on Saturday as well. Tickets are available at the high school. I know the, the staff and the players are very excited to put on this production. I really encourage folks to come out. Uh, it's very hard work, it's on par to any varsity experience. Um, and so I'm looking forward to, um, being a member of that audience. Uh, we are also having class meetings this week. Uh, we have made it a practices, the school year that we meet with every class, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders monthly. We try to have, uh, an agenda of items. Uh, this one lines up with the start of the quarter, um, second quarter, which is an academic block. But connecting to what Laura spoke about, um, we have a resource within the high school. Uh, her name is Emily Hackney, she's a, an outreach worker for us. Um, her office is located in the main lobby, kids know where she is. But she is a resource for food, for clothing, families who need heating assistance. We talked about the price of oil, that's already starting to impact people in the community. Um, we are sharing that information with kids in the meeting because we, of course, serve students who are closer to adulthood than, uh, maybe the younger grades. So, um, we do try to remind staff and students that even though this is the holiday season, it's not the most wonderful time of the year for everybody. So we try to encourage some empathy and some, uh, support for each other as we enter into November and December. And that's my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Payne that's out there? I'll probably be making a comment on the lines later on, but I wanted to make sure that if there was no class or educational things that we need to be looking at for the education committee here along that line. So, uh, we'll look for some of those to be flowing in, to look at no new classes that we need to have or whatever along that line, so.
The plan is to revisit as tradition in December, so if we have any proposals, we'll see you in December.
There you go, you got something for that education committee. Okay, all right, thank you, Jim. Middle school, Mr. Chris McGuire.
Thank you. So I'm also going to be brief, I think I'm going to, um, for the first time since I've been principal at the middle school, be briefer than Mr. Payne. Um, so it's going to be a little bit, uh, a little bit repetitive for those who have sat through education committee prior to this, I had some pieces that I want to highlight, uh, in, in my report that are, you know, congruent with what we were talking about there. So, uh, we have a lot of clubs and activities that have been, uh, you know, taken up at the middle school. We have about a dozen, uh, clubs and activities that we offer. Um, I have, uh, I want to thank Luke LaCroix, who is, uh, my, uh, after-school program coordinator. And he stays after daily, um, you know, he works at the schools, he stays after daily until four thirty to, um, kind of be the, the home base and the check-in for clubs and activities for middle schoolers. They get a free snack, uh, when they stay after school, and then they get picked up by their club advisor. It's also a place for student athletes, uh, to be supervised, um, you know, while they wait for practice and such. Uh, you know, if they have a practice, that's not, not super late. We do have a, a late bus that has, uh, started running as does the high school. Uh, so that picks up at four thirty, it goes north, it goes south, it goes stops, you know, up into, uh, you know, south into Powell, north to Shasbury, and north Bennington. Um, and I want to thank Kelly Brooks, who, uh, is my recovery coordinator for the middle school. He plans all the summer recovery. He's also done an amazing job working with administration, planning a winter recovery option. Uh, so basically, students that did not take us up on summer recovery and were identified as needing our, you know, extra help in, in subjects. Um, they're, they're staying after school and doing some work this winter for the, um, for the second, during the second trimester. Uh, so that's a, a new thing and that's exciting. For winter sports, uh, you know, we've, we've, again, talked about it in that committee, basketball, wrestling. Uh, it sounds like bowling is a, uh, Sounds like bowling is a club that we may be transitioning into a, a team sport, Nordic skiing. Basketball and Nordic skiing are starting on twelve five, wrestling eleven twenty-eight, and bowling on the thirtieth of November. Had a good turnout for, had a basketball sign up today, had a really good turnout for both boys and girls. Both had forty students sign up, show up to sign up for basketball. Thirteen wrestlers, middle school wrestlers signed up. I have, I wanted to put a plug. Last week, we, I had an eighth grade student, Peyton Setser, and his family support the middle school in some activities to honor our veterans. For Veterans Day, did a really nice job, just kept, you know, it was simple and effective. They had a table set up at the front, greet students. There was some free, you know, gear, some small American flags, some pencils, some bracelets to support our veterans. Those are handed out to any students that, that wanted, wanted to take some of them. Did a reading on Mike De Mayo, one of a, a teacher slash coordinator for restorative practices at the middle school. Also a social studies teacher by trade, did a nice job reading a poem and, you know, saying some words for our veterans. So it was just, it was a nice vibe, and it was just a nice way to, you know, to honor those who have given their service. And last, I just wanted to point out that I had a really good time in my rookie year as principal last year, working with student council. And the eighth grade student council has voted a, an eighth grade president and vice president. And so I've been meeting with student council, which is always a highlight of my day. Anytime I can meet with student council, I really enjoyed it last year, and I've, you know, I've talked with the, you know, with the new representatives and, you know, just really talked about how it's, it's, you know, it's. It's no joke. It's a, it's real important, you know, you're representing the school, you're representing the colors, and, and, you know, I, I look forward to working with them. So they were, they were great, and I do look forward to meeting the board on, you know, some of the, the things that they're doing. They've already organized a, a spirit week, and they have some other, they have some other pretty cool ideas that they, they want to put into practice, so that's my report.
Okay, thank you. If, if anyone else, the, the board members have a question. I just wanted to say, those both high schools, middle school buildings, doors, locking the systems, so forth along that line. I know we put a lot of stuff in place, but to manage those activities that occur in the afternoons or after school. Some people are trying to get in and can't get in, even though they, you may be holding an activity in the school. So I wanted to make sure we were aware of that and not, I don't know whether to sign on the door, say a phone call this. Or somebody so that you'd know that you're supposedly getting in the building, if you need, they need to get in the building. It's, it's really difficult moving from the elementary level into the middle school and then to the high school, and each stages are different. The, the, this, at the elementary level, parents see staff members, teachers walking their kids out the door. To get on the bus or to say hello or goodbye, and they see that. So, but when you get to the middle school, it's a little bit different, and then the high school is a little bit more different than that. So we may need to be trying to, I mean, to look at the concerns behind all of the COVID activity. And everything else, kids are inching, jumping, so forth, and they want to see a real person somewhere. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that, that, that we may need to be looking at how we can better present ourselves in the eyes of the students. And so they can relate that to the parents and so forth along that line, that we're seeing staff members and so forth out and around. So thank you both for those reports. I'll move into committee reports. And the first one that I have down is the Ag Land Committee report. I, I'm going to ask. Wendy Marie, she wanted, whatever name, to, to respond to that real quick. Just before she gets started, I'm going to, I was amazed at the write-up that the person from the middle school did in this program. It was flawless when I read it. I read it twice, and if you hadn't read it, you ought to pull it up and read it. Because it was flawless in terms of getting money for program for activities at the middle school. Oh, you got it.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Wendy Marie. I'm the Ag Land Chair for, for the middle school. Sustainability program, I believe is what it's called, and we met with Elizabeth Straussman last week. And she had a lot of really good news and updates about the program she does, but I think the thing that I want to talk about today is just her, her proposal for, for something called a hoop house. Which is a, a large greenhouse they have at the site. And she, she wrote something up that's, I think, very succinct and, and would be better if I just read it. And she said that the, a huge portion of our discussion on November eleventh for the ag meeting centered on automating the hoop house. Automating the gables and roll-up side walls would greatly improve performance of the hoop house in the spring and fall. Currently, these seasons have hard, less than optimal plant growth because of the hoop house gets cold enough to freeze many of the plants at night. And so hot during the day that rains like spinach and lettuce bolt. Our current land steward does an excellent job trying to open the hoop house in the morning and close it at night, but can't always be at school twice a day. Automating would mean that a simple sensory system would automatically open and close the rolling sides and vents as the temperature change. It would allow our land steward to spend their time more productively and give them a much more reasonable work schedule. Improving the job this way will likely help us keep high-quality staff. It will also safeguard losing lots of vegetables if the land steward is ever unexpectedly missing. One year ago, Tony, you know, Denofrio, did I say it right? And Catherine Keys investigated automating the gable vents using non-electrical wax cylinders that expand and contract and pour into temperature. By working with a local company, Fine Rice, they found that there was no reliable way to use the wax cylinders. Instead, we needed electricity in the hoop house to ventilate. In September, Alan Baker and Liz Straussman met with Rimmel, a large regional greenhouse company that, that makes, that makes hoop house. Makers the hoop house at MAUMS. Rimmel created quotes to automate the hoop house with either solar panels or battery. Or with AC if a conduit were laid from the middle school building. The possibility of running an AC power to the hoop house was quickly voted down by our ag committee because it would end up costing more than the solar array. And it would create a lot of digging issues, the sidewalks and what roadways would have to be dug out. The proposed automation using a solar panel and battery would be five thousand five hundred three dollars, and the estimated labor to install about twenty-six hundred dollars. The total cost would be around eighty-one hundred ninety-eight, ninety-eight cents. In our MAU ag budget, we have forty-six hundred dollars that could be used for this project. After putting aside money for our foreseeable remaining expenses for the year. And from Liz Straussman's CHDP Orchard Grant, she has an extra twenty-five hundred dollars that could be contributed toward this project. She says we have seventy-one hundred already to use, and at least two hundred, or excuse me, two thousand from the district. Said the project ends up costing a bit more, we can cover those expenses. Now, we did talk in the Ag Land meeting, and Tony and Susan, you were there. We talked about the fact that she probably shouldn't use all of her budget. And instead of asking for only the minimum of two thousand, if she could ask for half. So four thousand, and I believe you were gonna, Tony, you were gonna talk to some folks about that. Did you get any?
Talked to Ali already, she's looking.
So based on that night report, that. What you're looking for, some actions on this board, is it not too soon? You need some money.
Right.
Okay, and you gotta ask for that.
Okay, so we're looking for money. We're looking for half. Four thousand, four thousand fifty dollars is what we're looking for to automate the hoop house. I mean, Catherine is, I understand her in a situation where we're going to be out of the land steward soon, or we were looking for a land steward, is that correct? And only one person applied, and so Catherine can work, I believe, until January, is that right, Tony?
I don't remember what she said, no.
Yeah, that's, that's the timeframe. We're gonna re, we're reposting in January, and Catherine, that's, she, you know, she's. And I'm very happy to say she's, she's, you know, hunted her, her departure with us down the road so she could, you know, be part of that. Sometimes I'm not sure if she's ever actually going to go, and I would be okay with that, but.
So basically, what?
Any which way, it would be nicer to her if we had an automated hoop house, so.
Right, okay. So what you're looking for, and you have wheels in motion, and it need to be in order to spend it much, I mean, to spend the money from somewhere. This board would need to authorize the sum up to four thousand dollars for the use of a hoop house and the, for automation of the hoop house. In the buildings and, is not Marie, I mean, it's, it's Gordon. That's handling that, is, you said that to?
I, I went to Holly to see if she could find some grant money somewhere.
Okay, so is looking. If we don't get grant money, then you want to come back here, unless you want to approve.
Right, we need more money at that.
It'd be timeframe, and my reading the notes and everything, you're on a tight schedule. And if you don't get the, the, the money soon, it's gonna push you back for trees and all that other stuff along that line. For ordering, and I just, if, if that's what you're making a motion of, you can word it in such a way.
Okay.
That, that authorize, there you are.
Yeah, so Elizabeth Straussman and I, as the, as the Ag Land Chair, respectfully request, is that a good way of putting it? Respectfully request half of the total amount for the automation of the hoop house, which would be four thousand fifty dollars. And to be used to automate the vents, to have a more optimal plant performance for students.
You don't have to have a second, anybody else?
Is that, is that the funding sources? Where are we finding it from?
That's, that's what we're getting, I thought you were supposed to go to Renee, who's, and not, and the other name, the fourth person that's taking care of the buildings and.
Holly.
Holly. It's supposed to be.
Some is coming from a grant that she got for the church.
Right, so Renee is on, and so will it be appropriate for us to, to authorize a four thousand, up to four thousand dollars? For the funding of a hoop house when you're looking at where that money is actually going to come from and?
Yeah, if, if, if this is something that the board wants to support, I do not foresee any issue with us finding breakage in some line in the existing budget. Out of the general fund right now. I don't think it'll be an issue at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You had a motion, and we don't necessarily, we have a second from Susan. Any other discussions concerning the, the motion? All in favor, vouchs? Any I oppose? Fran Kenny, does he want to oppose? Anybody abstaining? None. The motion carries. Thank you. The next item on this be from the Education Activities Committee ad hoc.
Yeah, so this is from the Spinelli Field Ad-Hoc Committee. So the Spinelli Field Ad-Hoc Committee has matched basically every month for the last three months. To review a new plan for the Spinelli Field. So as we know that currently in its existence, there's some safety concerns with the current. Status of the field as well as the track. And the, last year, a temporary solution was put in to make the field usable for this year. With the understanding that it looks like we had used that usefulness through this season. So we would, there is definitely, needs to be something done for next year. So the plan that was proposed is a, a much. Trimmed-down plan in terms of what we're looking to make changes to. And the, the plan is to make adjustments to the turf, to put in a turf field for the. From the existing grass field, and then resurface the track and update the lighting. So that the field could be used all, all year and for small ball. The, the recommendation at this point, we, we're, we're, the plan was for us to vote on. The recommendation, but after having conversation in our finance committee, we have a question that we need addressed. Prior to voting for that actual recommendation and the financing of this project. So we are going to kind of hold on that until we get an answer to the question and then potentially have a, a special meeting if, if. We get an answer to that question to take action. However, the, the first action on this agenda, we, we do want to kind of discuss and take action on. And that would be in regards to beginning the research that needs to occur. The geotechnical engineering and the survey of the site that needs to be done before any work really would need to occur on the field. So the reason why we're, we're looking to get this going now is because we're kind of in a time crunch. So if we do not begin that geotechnical engineering work now, and then once that's complete, the permitting process would need to start. And then once, and that takes, that takes a while. And if we don't start that now, we would not be able to break ground on the project in the spring. Therefore, the field would not be available for use in the fall. And the concern is. We keep kind of delaying the project, and with the delays of the project, the price of the project is increasing. Due to, you know, the labor shortages and the increased price of supplies. So. The, the recommendation at this point, or the, the motion at this point, is to authorize the necessary site survey for the geotechnical engineering. For Spinelli Field to proceed as soon as possible for the current FY twenty-three MAU budget to not exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. So investing that money now to see what that field, what is necessary and what's the degree of work that needs to occur in terms of how deep they need to go. What the fill needs to be, all of that kind of stuff. And even if for some reason we're not able to proceed with the project this year, and it is something that we're going to need to push to next year. That, that survey, that geotechnical work and that, those, the plans and the, what do I call it?
Site survey.
Site survey.
Site survey, and no, but what do you apply for?
Apartments.
Apartments, thank you. Those will all carry over, and those will not expire. So we will not be like wasting money. It's not like we're going to be spending money and we wouldn't necessarily use it. So that is the motion at this point.
So, oh, the motion for thirty-five thousand dollars up to?
Up to not exceeding thirty-five thousand dollars for the geotechnical engineering at Spinelli Field to proceed as soon as possible to begin the process.
He answered all of my questions. So is there any other, we can have, you made the motion, you want a second?
Well, we just made a motion, and then we'll go to the discussion.
I thought you just made one second.
Yeah, you made the motion, Cheryl.
Did I get a second?
You don't have to have one this committee.
Okay.
And so now it's gonna be time for a discussion, in which I'm saying you answered the question. Thirty-five dollars, up to thirty-five thousand is not going to be lost.
Correct.
And the, the, the budget-wise, if the question is whether there was a problem with the budget out there anywhere along that line. I would hear from any. I would hear from any, uh, anybody in terms of, uh, Renee in terms of.
And we spoke to Renee at the meeting and, um, I think a similar response to what she discussed with the Ag is that. That there wouldn't be concern to try to pull that.
I'll move it up for discussion. Jackie, you had your hand up first, please.
Well, um, the other part of this that's not included in, in your amendments, uh, excuse me. And you might want to make an amendment is, uh, uh, Michael Law wrote to me and asked me. If I was going to do this scientific thing about the PFOA. And I forwarded to him, um, the response from, uh, Brian. Our state senator who gave me the name of a person who would verify or look at the turf in terms of whether or not it's. So that needs to be done too.
So that's, that's another question. This, on this question and what's on the flow is the thirty-five thousand dollars. For the geo tech engineering to proceed on. So that, that, uh, work can be put in place so that we can understand whatever's out there. Yes, definitely.
Does it, um, just does, does the thirty, you've mentioned three things, you said site survey and permits, so it's a thirty-five thousand dollars covering all three?
I believe so, yes.
And is that, is that, so I don't see any of those items in the proposed.
It is included in that too.
So it's embedded, so it will, it will be paying points because, okay, it.
Yes.
It's included in the two points, I mean.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. And it'll stay, it'll stay like Cheryl was saying.
So that's Tony that we talked about.
Yeah, sorry. And it, all the information that we get from the geotechnical survey, the permit, the site survey, all that, that goes with us forever. That's not gonna change. So even if we didn't do this project, we did it a year later, two years later, three years later, they're gonna need all that anyways.
Okay.
Regardless, so regardless.
So in the, in the future for one like this that's asking for something, you got the questions, as I said, the breakdown of all of these particular things that may be in there. I know it's in the minutes right here, but the, the, the total breakdown of what you're getting commits a period of question and so forth along that line. So the document that I would have been looking at was the, the request and then the breakdown of what was in it. In terms of the thirty-five thousand permits being if or ever be useful. Uh, you got it over, that's okay, I, I got, I took out something. So if you got it already, then I don't. I couldn't read everything in this short period of time. So are there any other questions for this, uh, motion? And now, are we prepared to vote all in favor of the motion, uh, as read?
Will she, will you amend the, uh?
Wait, wait.
Motion?
I, I, I mean, as a, um, as a ad hoc committee that wasn't part of what we discussed. So I, I don't know if we could, not saying we can't do it, but that wasn't necessarily part of what we were making a motion for now. I don't, do you, are you saying that you want it done at this point too or as part of the overall project?
Without having, I'm breaking, without having to have that discussion and, and, and another piece of work to be done. I think we need to take that back to having, we had that meeting earlier and that didn't come up. And so tonight, this meeting motion here is not, it's not feeling comfortable to make an adjustment right here. And so.
Just doing the geo thermal.
Yes.
That's exactly right. Don't wanna mix up stuff and get towns on some, it's a whole barely added on to something, uh, along that line. Overage, you know.
And that would be something I could bring back to my, um, amendment just initially.
Yeah, so all in favor of the motion as read and presented tonight to, uh, for geo tech engineering to start doing a site. And, uh, work with a bill of not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, raise your hands, aye? Aye, any opposed? We have one, the one opposed, any extension? Oh, the, uh, eyes have it.
I'm gonna talk about why I oppose everything, but go ahead.
You don't, you don't have to really justify it if you don't want.
Sure I do.
Okay.
You absolutely have to. Fran. The reason why I'm, I'm opposed.
Wait, wait a minute, I'm gonna give it and then I'll come right to you, but I wanna make this is clear. Is that, uh, we have, uh, one, one no and everybody else abstaining and I need to count the number here.
Everybody else, not abstaining.
That's right. Everybody voted yes and we have no extension. So now I'm gonna, a, a friend posed a question if, uh, asked to indicate why, uh. This is, this is just one item, so it's not.
I, I, I understand it, but I.
Okay, please be short and we'll move on.
I'll try to be as short as, as you are.
Okay, that's good.
Uh, now, we took a vote in the community. The community told us no. So the problem that I'm having is this board has backdoored the taxpayer. Uh, they're gonna do it anyway. So basically they slapped the taxpayer in the face. And, and that's fine and dandy, that's the democratic way, I guess. But I, I don't think people will forget it and doing that.
That hasn't come up in this committee yet, doing anything beside the site.
Gonna get your field anyway. My point being is it's wrong what we did, how we did it. And you're taking contingency money out of a budget, our general budget that we use to, you know.
Keep the tax rate down a little for everybody.
But can I just say something? We did not vote on the field at this point. So we're having a conversation that we did vote on it.
Where I get it?
If I hadn't recognized, you don't start blabbing out in here.
Leona, I'm gonna tell you something, now Leona, if I got something to say, I'm gonna say it. I don't give a good goddamn what the rules you wanna make. I'm gonna say what I wanna say, period.
You got the floor in here.
That's right. And everybody else is chiming in here. Why not something to say, I'm gonna damn well say it. Do I make myself clear?
You're supposed to respect other board members.
And then damn well start respecting me.
And that's what I'm, as a chair, I'm trying to get that respect. We let you talk.
Okay.
And that's what I wanna make sure is a.
Alright, let's move on.
Uh, we put it on the public comment, either one. So go ahead.
Did I finish?
The question was why you voted no, you wanted to tell everybody.
That's right. Now, when the people of the town start saying, you know, no, they don't want this. I'm not trying to rain on everybody's parade on a, a turf field. I don't give a damn one way or the other. But the point of it is, is, is the taxpayers have told us no. And we turn around and we backdoor them what we did. The board did vote, yo, yeah, let's do this. But my point is it's contingency money that we've had in this budget. And now we're gonna sit here and we're gonna spend it on a turf field anyway. And that's wrong, the, the way we did it.
Did you finish? You're all done?
I, I guess for now I'm done, yeah.
Okay, uh, Stephanie had her hand up, please. Not the friend to me, I'm.
I, I, I'm addressing the group also the friend. So, I mean. Uh, to my knowledge, unless I've missed a board meeting, we, this, this is the first, like, these documents, other than being in the ad hoc committee, these documents, these are the first time that they come to the full, like. Both to the full, full board and there was a discussion in the finance committee meeting prior to this meeting about it. Um, I, you know, I. We have not voted on this. I wanna be clear that, and like it has, I think finance, you know, I don't think we have our answers from a finance perspective. Whether we can pursue this funding model, um, and have the board vote on it in the conscience. I agree with you, Fran. I think that the board should have a real discussion. I agree with, I, so I think that the board should have. A real discussion about the transparency and like why voters, um. So if the vote, we don't know why the voters voted. We don't know if it was price, we don't know if it was PFAS. We don't know if it was turf.
What I wanted to make sure that it come up, yes, but I wanna make sure that it comes up in the right place.
So can I, but so my, my point is, is that like I would like a forum for that, but like to France, we have not voted on this. So we're not, so, but it needs to go through the proper discussion and I have, and I feel like we, there's no forum for that right now, yeah, so.
So, so I'm, I'm trying to make sure, there is a forum for this. And the ad hoc committee is meeting and any, you have three board representations on there to feed what you have for questions down to get answers. And so those questions have not come up and came to this board this way. The chair of that committee, I, I mean, uh, Sheila for education is saying. So I wanted to make sure she got a chance at this, and she said it. This is a thirty-five thousand dollars to look at other things about the field, we're gonna use it and use it no matter what, whether we go any farther. So.
So I just wanted to just make sure that because the statement's being made, that is not an actual accurate statement. And that's what I'm, I'm want to address. We are not backdooring anything at this point because we did not vote on anything. You, you, you're making a statement that where we voted to do, to do this field. We did not vote to do this field. We have not made it.
Absolutely false.
No, that's correct. I was at the.
That is false, period.
That's, that's, I'm going to end this particular conversation here at this time because, uh, it, it can move on. Because of time constraints and so forth along that line. Uh, the, the other item on here is you, you withdrawing the review. Findings and recommendations, that's what you're reviewing, you're withdrawing.
We have some questions that we need to be answered, just like Stephanie outlined in terms of the, the ability and how we can finance it. So, um, we have not brought anything to the board yet, um, to vote on as a MAU board. We had conversation as an ad hoc committee and made a recommendation and a vote to bring it to MAU. But now we, additional question that was asked, which was a fantastic question, and we are going to investigate. The answer to that question before we take any action or, and we will reflect on what our recommendation is to bring to the MAU board for a vote. So again, MAU making the, making the statement clear, MAU. Board has not voted on any action as of yet to proceed with this Spinelli field. The only thing we just came to do is, um, take action on doing the geo thermal if that does happen in the future.
Right, and I'll, I'll say that the, the questions and comments that you had, uh, uh, is one of the reason it went back to the committee. So that the bringing up here is going back to the ad hoc committee and there's actions to be taken and to get answers to those questions. And so I, I didn't wanna spend the time in here trying to discuss it. We heard the questions. And we, we're going back to the ad hoc committee and to get answers to those things. So, uh.
Can I just ask, we see your questions.
Yes.
So I just wanna understand, I mean, so Jackie brought up the question about PFOA or whatever, that like from, if we're under. If, if we decide that we're under a timeline, we want, we wanna do this, like, do, do all questions that just come up at the board meeting go back to the ad hoc, then back?
They're going back to, and I asked that to happen. Before this meeting, these questions that you're coming up with and which I got two of them. And I saw that one, third one going to that committee. They're supposed to have answers before they get here.
You didn't have the questions.
Uh, it, it was supposed to happen. You, you got it now. And so there's three questions outstanding out there and it goes back to be resolved for that field before it comes to us. Okay, so, uh, with that in mind, I'm gonna move on to the next item here. It's, it's, uh, we're, we're over my, the elephant frame. The, the next item is, is, uh, the chair's report. And I wanted to, uh, clearly state, uh, the position of things out here. Uh, as the board chair, you elected me and my job is to run an effective meeting. And to help educate the board members in here on what you can and cannot do. When you sign on as a board member, you sign a oath at the time, at the town office. As to what you were going to be able to do and how far it was gonna work. Me as the board chair, the, and there's an annual school board meeting every year. And they train and talk about what board members shouldn't and should not be doing. They use Bob as an example. And if you would have been there, you would have noticed that all the things that you're trying to do and so forth. The school board is saying that the meet, you're not supposed to do that. There's a way to do everything. And so board education is really important. If you're gonna help the members in this community out here. You gotta know that when somebody comes to you with some, how to channel that to the first person that's affected. Then the village building administrator, then the superintendent, and if it comes to the board. You have to be privileged enough to be able to make a, a ruling decision with legal out here. We get that at a training, but every year, if you don't wanna train yourself, then we sit and waste a lot of time asking a lot of questions. Board members need to be trained on Robert Ruzelaw and they're posted. So that you can answer questions and we can effectively do things. And take care of the business at hand. We hired an administrator, uh, we hired a superintendent to run the schools. This is what they covered at the annual meeting. Board members are, provide policies and look at the procedures and check on the outcome. Of the, all the requirements and make sure that they are being done effectively. We need to do that. So I wanted to bring that out and make sure we have committee meetings to discuss these things. And that's why we stacked them tonight, because I wanted everybody to see you need to be meeting to discuss these things, get answers to them. And if you don't have answers, the chair or whoever should find out how to get the answer and then you have a vote to move it on up the ladder. The, uh, uh, the next thing is, is, uh. I put it Robert Ruzelaw and so forth. The, we, we owe it, uh. To the, to the kids in this community. We owe it to the teachers and the administrators and we owe it to ourselves. We have been through hell in these last few years out here. And it, it ain't a struggle for just kids, it's a struggle for staff, it's a struggle for youth. It's a struggle for administrators out here to try to get back on track. And we all need to step back and take a look at yourself first. Before we start pointing at everybody else because we all catching hell. We're trying to get everybody back on track. And I want, I need your help with that. They need your help. The kids need it. So I'm asking questions to all administrators. I'm asking the pimp, what is it that we can do that save one kid? Because they wind up in this community. To help take care of you at some later date of take a job and stay right here. We need to focus on all those things as a board to make sure that is happening out there. And so, as I said earlier, and then I'm going to say, I'm trying to run an effective meeting. I'm trying to run it right. I'm trying to train everybody, get everybody to get involved with making things happen. Thank you for the, the chair's report. The next item's on here, FYI, budget status report, fifty-six pages. Seven million nine hundred and forty dollars. Uh, nine, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents. I read every page. Student enrollment, two lists out there to tell you how many students are in the school and what programs are they in. And if you think they're getting the help that they need. I read both of those sheets. And I'm hoping everybody in here as board members are doing just that, understanding these programs. So that we got kids that need help, they can get it. The coaches follow this, that just came out. I made a copy of it over here for what coaches are gonna be involved and so forth. I read that it came from two. It says FYI and so forth, and then we'll wind up having to. It says FYI and so forth. And then we'll wind up having to, uh, make sure that they have their proper pay and so forth. So we're getting questions that we need to be addressing in education, finance, in management and so forth. You need to start getting those things done with me. So I would appreciate that and that's the end of my, uh, meeting. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. It's at seven thirty-three, I'm thirty minutes over the line. Is it moved? Anyone have any objection, any comment? All in favor? Aye. Thinking that's mine, assuming.